Okay. I should probably move to this. Hang on. Okay. I'm gonna... This webinar is... Hey.
You never seem to be able to find just the right... I probably should move a little because... It's my lovely daughter's face. Okay. Um... Okay, so that's not my glasses. Okay, so we... Oh, there's Chris.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up. There we go. Hi, Chris.
Hello. How are you? Get... Oh.
Are we working? Do I not have my volume up enough? Let's find out. Try that again. Can you hear me, Chris?
He's got his mute button on, right?
Yeah. You're on mute, Chris. Wait.
There we go. How about that?
There we go.
Karen, you're on mute button.
Okay. Just... We're just trying to make sure it works before.
There you go.
And I apologize because I have not gotten to look at your... I've been so immersed in these other hundreds of pages. Um... Oh.
Is that not broadcast to all attention? Is it in us or anybody who happens to be on?
So, um, at the top, Karen, on the right, it'll say gallery view or speaker view.
Okay. So I want gallery view.
I'm gonna pause. We are recording. We are active. Can you hear us all through the computer or...
I can.
Okay. So you can hang up your call. I hung up. All right. And we are not going to have Lisa tonight. She is in Washington, DC, so that her son can get his visa to go to London to play soccer. Football. Soccer. I don't know what they call it up there. Anyway, she's in DC. Are we missing anyone else? Where... Oh, there you are. Paul Fitz, you've moved it all the way to the top for some reason. Okay, Paul, we're ready, whoever you are.
Okay. So we have... We have eight board members or seven. One, two, three.
Nope, give me eight.
Well, Joe and... Okay, is there... And Lee is there. She wasn't supposed to be here. Okay. So we will have a total of eight. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So everyone is... I'm looking at... Some are muted, some are... Well, let me welcome all to our... Our special meeting that was called at one of our board members' requests to discuss a number of items which are on the agenda that you all have seen. I'd like to start by opening the meeting with a motion to open the meeting in a second. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
And let's... Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance, which is our normal routine. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Very good. By way of explanation, I don't have... For some reason, I don't have that other panel that shows me who might be in attendance other than ourselves. You had that time?
I bet. Yeah. As a host, yep.
So do we have any audience out there besides us?
About 20 people watching, including our friend David.
Including us, so...
Okay, very good. Well, I wanted to give a little explanation to how this special meeting came into existence. I got a request on the 29th of July from a board member, Dr. Karen Fontana, for a meeting, and you all received a copy of that. I then, over the next few days, coordinated that with everybody. Karen had a particular... Some particular agenda items and a date in mind, which was tonight. And that worked pretty much with everybody except their superintendent. Peter had a conflict for tonight, but he was willing to go ahead and set the meeting up for us, and he did. And so we're all here on Zoom. And the idea behind the meeting is to discuss some things that we have touched on in our meetings to date, but haven't had a chance to really discuss in detail. And I think that was the gist of what Karen had suggested. And at this point, I think I'll just ask Karen to offer a few comments on the items and her thinking in terms of requesting this meeting, and then we can move on from there. Karen, would you do that, please?
Try. Do I have to do anything? Just talk?
You're good.
You're good.
You're good.
Okay. So my thought was, I hadn't been through this before. There was a number of things we needed to talk about, and they just... When we have five-hour meetings, we're not gonna bring up a topic that needs to be talked about at 10:30 at night. But this just seemed like the most conducive way to do it. Make it short, make it brief. Didn't know what the time that Peter was going to be able to be available, just thinking that Thursday night's pretty much everybody is free. But I understand Jonathan's concern not to really go into detail about a couple of the items. Probably need Peter's in-depth, you know, opinion and stuff. So that's... You know, that's not a problem with me. But I think, generally speaking, if we want to start with the agenda, the reopening plan, I think it just basically... It's out there. I think everybody's pretty well aware of it. I don't know if any of us have any questions that we want to ask. I know Chris is here, kind of representing the administration side of things. Any questions we want to ask or anything? Other than that, I think that's... I don't think there's much we can do with the reopening part. So I'll throw that out for discussion.
As I mentioned earlier, I think it's important for us to clarify for our families that there have been two separate surveys sent out. When they received a copy of our redistricting or reopening plan on July 31st, it did state in that Paul Hagerty and I looked through those emails from a parent perspective today. So they would have gotten one email in July with a short survey. On July 31st, they would have received the full reopening plan, and in that it stated you'll be receiving a form. That form came by way of another survey. So I've had several parents say to me, "I already did one, but you really do need to do both." But Chris, can you walk us through what's happening for anyone who does not have an email address or give us an update on how many responses were... You know, are we getting the responses promptly?
You have to mute.
Are you muted, Chris?
Can you hear me now?
Now I can. I can hear you now.
I can't hear you very well, Tanya, but I believe you asked, "Are we getting responses to it?" Was that what you said?
Am I not loud enough or am I breaking up?
Actually, now you're better.
Okay. I moved closer. Okay. Yeah. So I'm asking how... Yeah. There's been a lot of questions of people saying they didn't realize that it was a different survey. So some people were just not doing that second one. And I just wanted to reiterate, it's really important that they do the one that was sent on Monday, August 3rd. But how are we handling people who might not have internet access or an email for us to send that request to?
Okay. Right now, we have about 2,000 responses on that. And the families who do not respond to that, we also have it in there where we're pulling data by school, so we can see who responded, which families responded, and which families were not able to respond. In the schools, any family that hasn't responded, the schools will be reaching out to them personally to get... If they don't have that internet access. But what we're seeing trend-wise with internet access is it's well over 96% of the families tend to have internet access at this point, based on the survey. So again, the schools will be calling those families that do not have access or who have not responded to that survey to get their answers to that survey.
I think overall, there's a great deal of information that's on the... You know, on the web right now, and I think it's... You know, parents have access to it. I think it's pretty informative. So any other comments about the reopening plan for right now?
Just to amplify on that a little bit, Karen, the website is particularly... We have a new website directed at the reopening, which actually consolidates all of the information going back to the original directions from the State, our plan, and it also has a frequently-asked question section. So it's... There's a lot of information, and it's all located in one place, and it's very informative. So this is all driving towards the fact that we're trying to get the consensus of our parents relative to reopening and their preferences by the 14th of next week, which is kind of the cutoff. And so it sounds, from what Chris said, that that's going very well. My other comment is that there's been a lot of discussion in the media and talk about various school plans around the state. And my comment there is that there's an amazing amount of similarity between our plans and what other people are doing. So I think a lot of school districts have settled on a similar approach based on the particulars of their district, and I think that's encouraging as we move forward. And just finally, I think the big pacing item that everyone is waiting for is this final decree from the governor in terms that we're gonna be going forward with the reopening. All the statistics currently on the infestation rates in New York are quite low, so there's not a disease-oriented reason why they wouldn't go forward, but there may be some other issues that are creeping into it. But that'll be a milestone when that's finally decided and districts like ours can move forward with their plans. But it's very interesting. If you follow the news media at all, or there was quite a comprehensive article in Syracuse Sunday paper that looked at a lot of districts across central New York and did sort of a comparison, and it was quite interesting. So if you have no other comments, if...
I do have one comment, Paul.
Sure.
I read online in a few places, there's confusion in our region specifically because certain boards in our area have voted on a reopening plan. Our district is not doing a board vote on the reopening plan. I just think that's something worth bringing up in public session. My understanding is most districts aren't because there's no precedent for boards to vote or have a decision in schools reopening on a normal case. Case for years. So obviously, there's a big decision, but it's worth the public knowing that this is not a board issue on the most basic level. I think that's an important distinction for folks to understand.
I'm not getting...
Chris, I'm trying to find it here. Can you clarify? Is it... Is it RCSD reopening? Is that the address? Does people have questions? Is that RCSD reopening or is it Rome reopening? RCSD? I know it's the specific email. We're getting a couple of questions in the chat, and I really want to encourage them to send those questions to the specific email that was set up. Do you have any... I'm not finding it here in mine. I thought it was here on the page.
Tanya, I'll see if I can find it in just a second. I gotta get to the plan itself.
Oh, is it on the plan?
Yes, it is. It's in...
When you find it, can you type it in the...
It's...
Know that.
Tanya? Can you hear me?
How's that?
Okay.
Is my audio any better now?
The address is RCSD reopening, all one word, at RomeCSD.org. So if the public has any questions on the reopening plan, please use that, and we'll work to answer those questions for you.
Right. And no decisions will be made until we complete that survey, unless we get other direction from the governor, correct?
Tanya, the email address is also on the website, on the reopening page on the front page, if folks are on the website looking for that also.
I think that's where we are, is at this point in time. And so going forward, there'll be more information coming forth from the district. So unless we have any additional comments, I would suggest that we move on to our second topic, which is committees, board committees. Would Karen, would you like to comment on that to start us off?
Sure. I guess I just want to say that... I'll explain what my vision is for committees, I guess. I see committees as doing like the fine tuning and the nitty-gritty stuff and then taking notes, getting all the materials together, sharing them with the board members, either minute, like meeting agendas, meeting minutes. And then when we go to the board meeting, we have like an executive summary to present. It's kind of similar to how Mr. Blake and I ran policy the last year that I was on the board. Like, we sat down. Sometimes Chris was there. It was mostly just Peter and I. And we sat, we really looked at the policy, and we nitpicked, we wordsmith, we did all those things, and then we presented the policy to the committee. They did some more work, but it really... It just allowed a lot of things to get done, so that when we got to the full board, all the really hard work, the, you know, looking at all the... We're looking at, I can say, instructional services. That's where you look at all the data, personnel, you look at all the background and stuff. You get all those discussions, all this stuff, questions get answered, and then summarize, the executive summaries taken, you know. So I'd like to see the three committees that have been kind of disbanded come back. That would be instructional services, personnel, and buildings and grounds. I can give a rationale for each one, but that's kind of where I stand. So I'll throw it out there, because we started the discussion, we haven't really finished it.
Well, we did have a discussion as a board before you... Well, in between your two terms about disbanding them, and we disbanded them for very concrete reasons, just to reiterate those and how we got here for the public or anybody that doesn't remember. I let Joe, who is far more passionate than I am, speak to why Buildings and Grounds was disbanded. For me, you know, personnel and instruction and services were disbanded because what was happening was we were getting all of the information that we should and can get from the folks who run these departments. Alex, Chris Brewer filtered through three individuals. And like you said, in some ways, those three individuals get a bunch of work done that is harder to do in a general meeting with nine members. But the problem is that we are nine people with nine perspectives, nine backgrounds, and we are all representing the district at large, which means that we're bringing our perspective and our individual, you know, acumen to those conversations. And by picking three members for each committee, we are immediately, you know, sort of limiting exactly how much feedback and how much discussion is going to happen. You know, I don't like to talk about things I wasn't present for, but I've heard very mixed things about how INS worked and what function was. And I've heard things that troubled me, and I was glad that it was disbanded because of those things. You know, again, I was there, so I can't speak to it firsthand, but I've spoken with people who were. I've heard, you know, folks who were on the administrative side, who were on the teaching side, who were brought into those meetings that said they were either uncomfortable or, you know, were sort of a telltale of a board that is at too much a ground level. I would, Karen, like to hear how you envision it working. I don't dismiss anything out of hand at any point ever, but my reticence to get involved with INS is strictly based on the things that preceded me and what I've heard about them and some different perspectives. Knowing that this conversation was coming, I've reached out to people specifically and asked, and I had a really great conversation with Chris Brewer last week. I just, you know, I'm eager to hear what you have in mind for INS.
Yep. First, committee doesn't have to have three members. A committee can just have two members, can have four members, can have everybody, you know. It's not like we're gonna exclude anybody, but you don't have to have three. There's no set number. But I can speak to INS from both perspectives, because when I was a teacher, I was involved in numerous committees and stuff, and I had to present, had to go to INS as a teacher myself. So it was not like it was... You knew that when you went to INS that you needed to have your information ready, because the board members were going to ask questions, because they were trying to work collaboratively with the district administrators to show where our students are heading, where student achievement's going, how's it going, how's our improvement plan's going, things like that. So I've been on both ends, so I think I can speak from both ends. But my vision as a board member, I... We have... We're a targeted district right now. We have certain requirements because we are a targeted district as far as what we have to do. So I, you know, I just like to see that we talk about our strategic plan, the goals, connected with this strategic plan, are we making progress towards that? What's our district comprehensive improvement plan look like as far as what goes... Has to go to the state? We're required to go to the state. Required to have stakeholders involved. Just... We need updates on the RTI and AIS plan. It'd be nice to talk about the curriculum cycle, what subjects and stuff are up next on the curriculum cycle. My idea's not... It's all about student achievement and trying to improve student achievement and working collaboratively with the district. I'm not trying to tell them what to do. I'd just like to say, "Let's work together." Because we're really the gauge for how our students are doing. That's one of our main tasks, is what... How our students are doing. And so, I don't know. I'm just trying to... That's how I envision it. That's where it was before, that we track student achievement, we talk about student achievement, we look at our plans, we evaluate our plans, are our plans working? And that's what instructional services is supposed to do. So...
The problem I have with that... The problem that I have with that rationale, a couple things. It sounds like it's dangerously close to direction rather than oversight, and I think that that's something that is strictly outside the function of the board. And, you know, discuss... Let me hang on a second. I just want to finish my point.
I thought you were finished. That's all. I'm not trying to interrupt you there.
No, no. Second, there was a model that was suggested by Peter a couple of meetings ago, where we could have that sort of information presented to the entire board, rather than filtered through one person or however many people are gonna ultimately be on these committees, bringing this information back to us secondhand. Instead of having that information brought to us secondhand by those committee members, Peter presented a model where we could have a work session preceding our meetings, where these heads, department heads are coming in and providing exactly the information and data that you're asking for. You also have the opportunity to present them with questions and any requests for data ahead of their appearance at the board meetings. And I don't know why that model is inferior to what you're suggesting, especially when the information that we're getting from the department heads is coming directly from them and it's being given to the entire committee and not being filtered. So I mean, those are the two problems that I have. I don't like filtered information. There are certain subjective biases, whether it's conscious or unconscious, that work their way into these reports that are provided to the board by the committee chairs that don't always reflect what was actually presented at these meetings. And that was my biggest problem with all of these committees and why I prefer having the department heads there in person, where we can ask direct questions of them, and we can ask, you know, ahead of time if there's specific information that we need. We can have them bring it to us, or either prior to the meeting or at the meeting, and we can digest it and go through it with them. I don't like the fact that, you know, certain people, when they're part of a committee, there was, you know, Buildings and Grounds specifically. We had a situation where we had two board members coming in almost every time there was a discussion about Buildings and Grounds, and they were always on the opposite ends of what happened at that meeting. And that's why I got so frustrated with Buildings and Grounds, because we had one person painting a super rosy picture about all the capital projects that were happening. We had another one that was presenting nothing but doom and gloom about the projects that were happening. And, you know, we were finding out about some negative things after the fact that, you know, were preventing us from making good decisions. And, you know, instead of that constant infighting among committee members that was brought to the board, that was wasting our time, it was... I feel that Alex coming to the board or LaBella coming to the board and presenting to us directly and being able to answer questions that we have is the best way to handle it, not to ask the committee chair, "Hey, how did it go?" "Oh, I think everything's fabulous. The... All the capital projects are fabulous. Everything's on time, and there's really nothing to see here." I don't like that. Okay? So that's why I'm vehemently opposed to having these committees reinstituted. You know, there's much more work that we can done, get done. There's much more progress that we can make when we have somebody that is the department head that is looking at these problems, dealing with them on a daily basis, coming in and telling us directly what's going on, rather than having them filtered. And that's my issue.
Is it okay to speak now?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm done.
Okay. So Paul, is it... So why do we have policy and finance then? The same arguments hold?
Because they're... Sorry. They're legally required. We have to have policy and finance.
So I just want to share that... Just playing devil's advocate, Joe, you're part of the New York Bar Association. I'm very aware that they have upwards of 50 committees. The... I have a friend who is a county legislator. She's sitting on five committees, just as a legislator for her local district, and there are several legislative districts just in Rome. It disturbed me to try to understand why a nine-member board can't get its committees to function and... to function and report appropriately. And I think for me, the part about committees, I don't know that I necessarily want to go back to the same committees that we had, but I'm looking at things like, I definitely have to agree with Karen, I don't know that it would be called instruction and service, hang on, I'm gonna, so I, I'm sorry, I'm taking my camera off so that hopefully you can hear me a little better. Um, I don't feel like we have enough time to have organic conversations. I don't feel like I'm prepared a lot of times during the meeting when it's time to vote on something. I don't think we're able to have a more casual dialogue, and I think even the other night, you know, a five-hour meeting i- is exhausting. And so I see both sides. I see the concern of not getting consistent, accurate reporting, but I also see the perspective of trying to create an environment where we are more collaborative. I, I personally have, you know, looked at some other districts and, you know, I'd be a huge advocate of us having some type of a community relations committee. We had an issue come up right after this board was elected, that some members were not comfortable with how it was addressed, um, but we didn't have a great forum to have a conversation about it. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with Karen, I'm definitely not seeing the academic progress that I would like us to see, and I think those two things go hand in hand in changing the narrative and telling our story of who we are as a district. And it just, having started on the board for a couple of months when we had committees, and then the new term started and the committees were disbanded, I found the time listening to conversations in committees a little bit more valuable in terms of less formality, more off the cuff, and more like, oh, that makes more sense, rather than in the heat of the moment, like, I need to vote on this right now and I'm really not clear.
Uh, John Matijek-Walder, you have your hand up, would you like to make a comment?
Thank you, yes. I mean, I, I participated on personnel, um, which ironically, we've heard the administrator who was chairing that committee over a year ago, and we had conversations as a nine-member board in a general meeting about restoring personnel, but it's nobody's pet project, so we haven't restored it. It's like, I understand very much the, uh, desire to want to get involved with the things we have personal, uh, experience and stake in. I mean, when we had committees, I thought in my first term, like, that's a good thing because Larry Perselt, who was on the board at the time, on buildings and grounds, fantastic, that's like his whole domain, that's what he does for a living. He knows endlessly more than I do, uh, in, in regards to those topics. But that same person was coming out of that meeting with a very different opinion of what was happening in that meeting than another person. And so I got kind of fed up, as Joe alluded to, with the idea that, why aren't I just getting this information? If, if it's, if we're talking about saving somebody 30 minutes, so yes, I, I, I can actually disagree with you. The conversations that happen inside of committee meetings are valuable, but here's the thing, when we have them at 9:30 or 11 o'clock or 10 o'clock on a Wednesday, we're basically telling the public that you can't attend, because a vast majority of the public will not be able to attend. Uh, it's hard enough to get board members as it is, when we have, you know, committee meetings or any meeting at a time when, you know, normal working-class people are working, it's just, we're not really open here. So I've been on the same tangent for two, two-plus years now, saying, let's make the board operate for and by everybody in this district. And so if we go back to committees, A, we'll be cutting a bunch of the public out of the meeting, yes, they can watch the things, but you know, top of mind is top of mind, and when these things happen is when they happen. People aren't going to go back and re-listen to an hour-long recording, um, and soon the governor's going to sunset our ability to meet the way we're meeting today. Um, hopefully we can get our ducks in a row and make sure that we can continue doing this, because I'm totally in favor of it. But we have ADA compliance to contend with, and it costs a ton of money, and we're, we don't have money. So, I mean, I would like to resume giving the public as much information as possible. Um, I know that that makes our jobs harder, because we've got to think of the questions we need to ask ahead of time, and then follow up in emails or phone calls, but that's our job, that's not the public's job, and it's on us. And if it's hard, it's hard, that's just how it's got to be. Um, you know, I don't want to get in this conversation, so I'll leave my two cents there, but everything you said, I agree with, it's just a different approach.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment about committees? Uh, Lee?
Yeah, I, I just want to say I agree with Jonathan, I'm all for increased transparency of the district. I think that more committee meetings leads to less transparency ultimately. Um, and, uh, I think that when we talk about allocating resources, you're responsible to allocate school resources to endless meetings, um, especially this year, given all of the increased uncertainty. Um, so I'm definitely, uh, in favor of less casual chat and more, um, sticking to the agenda and, uh, less, less interested in specific, uh, committee structure. And, uh, I was in favor of the compromise that Peter had suggested a few weeks ago about bringing the department heads in. I think that last meeting is a bad example of what our meetings traditionally could look like, given all of the material that we had to cover in the work study. Um, and also, I just want to remind everybody that we spent a good 20 minutes talking about shot put and another 25 talking about the pool. So I think if we could have more concise conversations and be more respectful of each other's time, then, uh, then I don't see a need to go back to, um, sometimes redundant long committee meetings that use, uh, school resources kind of like, like is being proposed.
Uh, Tanya, did you have a comment?
I do, I'm, I'm going to shut my video off again, hopefully to, they say on Zoom when you shut your video off, it improves your sound. So, um, I, I feel like there's kind of, um, I value Lee's statement, but it's a little bit contradictory, because the very point is, if we had had a buildings and grounds committee, maybe those questions about the pool, or the questions we had a couple of meetings ago about the turf, or, um, the questions about the shot put, would have been a dialogue that the committee would have had and reiterated in an email prior to the meeting versus something that took up time in the main meeting. John, um, Lee, we're all on the same page in terms of the transparency piece, but I think that even leads more to some of the other items on our agenda tonight, and it's things that the prior president talked about and that we, um, you know, I, I still have my, okay, wait, now, now I'm holding so close to the camera with, like, camera on. I mean, I still have these two documents from, and, and a book that I'm reading from attending NISPA last year, that are all about, you know, relationships with the community and how we tell our story and how we connect with people. So I really, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where I saved these electronically, so that I can, um, email them to everybody, but interestingly, maybe we put this in the wrong spot on the agenda, because I think this ties into a couple of the other items, which are, how do we work more collectively as a board? How do we set the goals that we want to attain and measure them throughout the year? And how do we make sure the community knows, when we make a decision, we have put the appropriate amount of thought and dialogue into the decision? Because it's been very difficult sometimes to feel under the wire, that we got to decide, we don't have time to table, there, we don't have another forum to have a conversation, and it, it's hard. And I've only ever worked in, you know, situations where you do form subcommittees, so I guess it's, um, a challenging point of reference. But maybe, maybe this part is more of the focus, and I think it's really what incited Karen to want a meeting tonight, is how do we foster those relationships, both between the nine of us and Peter, and our constituents who voted for us? So the comments that John and Lee both just made kind of more lent to that, of how we become a better board and more relational than the committee structure itself, although I kind of think they go hand in hand.
Okay, I'd like to try to bring this to a wrap up. Uh, Joe, did you have something, Joe Malachi, did you have something else you wanted to say? Briefly, if you could.
Just very quickly, yeah, thank you, Paul. So, I mean, Tanya mentioned that maybe we could have avoided the discussion regarding the shot put and the field, um, at the last meeting, had we had a, a committee meeting. The fact of the matter is, 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 um, there were a number of issues that occurred with Stroud, uh, a number of issues with, that occurred with the Joy, uh, construction, that we didn't get to discuss because of information that was not brought to us after committee meetings. So I think there's a lot of information that you also miss because of the information that is filtered by the person or persons that are on the committee. Um, you know, and again, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's, it's a conscious thing or a subconscious thing, it's just a fact that it happened. And so I don't know that you're getting more information out of committees, I think you're getting less. And as far as trying to digest information, um, you're still going to be getting information from the committees that you're going to have to digest, and usually that information comes in the form of a brief, um, you know, discussion during a meeting as to what happened at the meeting, along with a comment of, well, if you really want to know, go ahead and go back and review the, the minutes of the, of, of the meeting, and, and you can get a general flavor of what happened. Um, that to me is, is, is not something that, that, that is optimal when it comes to getting uh, uh, the, the, the most information that you can from these departments. And, you know, you, you could say what you want about other government entities using committees, um, you know, how's, how's New York State operating right about now? You know, they can, they can have as many committees as you want, but right about now, would you say that, that the, the way that the New York State government is, is functioning, is, is functional, is, is optimal because of the subcommittees that they have? Um, so, you know, I, I think it's apples and oranges in any event, and, and again, I just, I just don't think that it's the most, uh, the best use of our time and resources to, to focus on, uh, how to restructure these committees and make them work. And, you can move, you can, you can move on at this point.
Okay. I, I'd like to, excuse me.
One question from the parliamentary.
What was that, Jonathan?
Go ahead, Paul.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned before, I'd like to try to, uh, kind of bring this part of our conversation to a, to a close for now. I think it's a lot of, of good conversation, a lot of, uh, similar comments. Um, and I think, just stepping back a second, part of, uh, the impetus behind suggesting going back towards a committee structure is, uh, the idea that many of us, including myself, feel that, uh, we're just not having enough dialogue on certain subjects as, as a board, and, and we're looking for mechanisms to promote that. And certainly, uh, the committee structure is one that can work that way. Now, uh, we had a number of instances where people were disappointed in the way the committee structure, um, functioned for them over the last couple of years, but if you go back in time, uh, in, in fact, some of you that were critical of committees also said there were, you know, there were benefits, uh, to them, that, you know, committees can be very, very informative if they're structured to, to convey information and to allow for interaction between members. And we've, I could give you a lot of examples of very productive committees where a lot of information has gotten discussed. And, and there's different ways that you can make that happen. Part, part of it is how the committee chair, uh, functions with his point, uh, his counterpoint in terms of creating an agenda and, and the topics that they bring forward. Uh, but, but rather than debate, you know, the, the merits of committees, I think I'd like to put that off for a while and just kind of plant the seed that what we're really trying to do is create a better information exchange and a better mechanism for interchange amongst the board members, conversations on the board. And, uh, quite frankly, uh, the, the, the way we functioned over the last year or two is, you know, the, the meetings have been very expedited, but it's been very difficult to, uh, to really strike a, a, any kind, anything resembling a, a, an exchange between board members, because, you know, we've been a little bit polarized, so, some people just didn't want to get into the details, or they weren't interested in the subject matter, or we were running out of time, you know, all good reasons why you need some other mechanism. So that's why when we had our prior, prior meeting, it was suggested that maybe going back to the two-meeting-a-month, uh, format, where we would make one meeting more of a working meeting that would promote maybe more of this discussion that we're talking about, and the other one focus more on business and, and passing resolutions and, and bringing things forward that had been discussed at the pre- preceding meeting. Now, that's not always possible, but that, that was the theory behind it. Uh, I think that's what we're searching for, and, and whether, whether committees satisfy that, or whether some committees work and others don't, I think is, is a, a fair, a fair discussion, but, uh, but I'm glad we, we had this discussion today, and, uh, I'll, I'll give, if, if, for a final comment, if you can make them, uh, kind of quick, because we've got a couple more items to talk about, and we're already approaching an hour. Uh, go ahead, John, I think you were the one that was queued up first.
Yes.
John Matijek-Walder.
I agree with what you're saying.
Okay, John Nash, could you, John, we're having trouble hearing you.
Let me turn the video off, yeah. Is that better? Is that any better?
No.
Still a little faint, but I, I can hear you, okay?
Okay, I put my volume up, hopefully that'll help you. Anyways, I agree with what Paul said, and I also am concerned that the dysfunction with how the committees are, have run in the past, is the onus is on us to perform better. That, just because in the past, some, some of the individuals in the committee did not work or relay the correct information, I think the onus is on us to get on the same page when we bring forth information from the committee, instead of, um, I mean, I think it's, it's just, it's our responsibility. Thank you.
Uh, John?
My, my simple point is that we've had this conversation some 10 times in the last year and a half, and it was a point that was made many times in the year prior, when, prior to disbanding these committees. I kind of feel like I'm in some kind of awful, you know, episode of the Twilight Zone. I would just like to put some kind of definitive, is this a, a thing we voted on? I mean, I just don't want to keep litigating this. Um, we have other things to do. And, and we've already made two different decisions about how we can make the board function better. We are having more meetings, and we've asked Peter to make a greater demand from department heads to relay that information for an hour, for two departments, 30 minutes apiece, to the board at each general meeting. We haven't even seen that bear fruit yet. I mean, we've only had one meeting with that iteration, so, I, do we want to vote on this or not vote on this? I mean, I just don't want to keep talking about it. It's, it's, it's clearly passion for everybody, but it's really not worth the time.
Well, the, the item to talk about, John, maybe rather than the committees, is, is our desire to, uh, receive more information in a different format, and whether that's committees or whether it's some other mechanism is fine. For instance, what you, you mentioned that, you know, Peter would bring forth, uh, department heads to talk about, uh, different things, um, that could work much like a committee, if you had a focal point like you do in a committee, that would interact with that department head and, and, and figure out what, what seems to be important to the board and build- what, what it seems to be important to the board and buildings and grounds or INS or something like that. And then that, then that came forward, that, you know, that, that could work. I mean, that's kind of the way the committee, the committees functioned when they functioned well, it just had involved a few more people. So that, I think what we, what I'd like to have us do is keep our eye on how we can improve the communications. Or if, you know, if you're perfectly happy with the level of, of the communications that you've gotten, the amount of detail and the timing, then, then, then fine. Uh, you know, some people, I know prior board members thought, you know, there was, there was too much detail, they weren't interested in going to that level of detail. And that's fine, that, for that individual board member. If that's a consensus on the board that we need less information, you know, that's, that's a, that's a finding. But if you feel like you would have liked to have more advanced notice or more details about a particular thing before it came to the board for, in the form of a resolution, then that's what we're looking for. We're looking for those kinds of solutions to those kinds of problems, be, be they whatever. Okay, you know, you don't like committees, then maybe you suggest something else. But that, that was, I think that's the underlying theme here is to try to create more dialogue between us and more discussion at the board level. So we truly come up with board, you know, board decisions and board positions on things after we've, after we've had a chance to discuss it. Uh, did anybody else want to, or can we move on to another topic? Okay, let's move on to ideas for board focus. Karen, would you, we, that may have changed your original, what was your thoughts in, in terms of that item?
Well, you asked everybody to send in their priorities or whatever for the year for the board to address. So I don't know if you ever got a compilation of where we were going with that. So that was the reason for putting that down. So I know that, so I know.
I wanted, go ahead, you can either go ahead. I, I actually asked the question to make sure that, I was pretty sure that, that was the intent of your question. And we did do what we called a little brainstorming exercise where we, we queried all the board members in terms of what was important to them. And I, I have compiled that a little bit and I can tell you for one thing, and I think I mentioned this in one other meeting, that, you know, kind of the top agenda items for almost all board members was the reopening issues and reopening activity. So, so that was clearly, you know, number one in everybody's, uh, now, once we got below that, there was less, less consensus. So we had, uh, we had some people that wanted to, you know, know more about the, you know, our financial situation. There, there was quite a bit of interest there. Uh, we had some people that want to go back and revisit our discussions on, on redistricting and regrading that we sort of put off, especially when the COVID problem came along. That, that was mentioned by several. And then, then, and then there was, uh, other, other areas, people that wanted to see more data in certain areas like attendance data, academic data, things like that, the report card, health data, uh, things that we haven't, uh, haven't concentrated on a board as a, on as a board in terms of regularly looking at that, that kind of data. And, and I'm kind of in that category too. I think there's some things that we are lacking when it comes to data or we could use as a board in terms of going forward and making decisions. So, so, uh, that was kind of the gist of it. I don't really have a bottom line for you, but I did get comments from almost everyone. And, uh, and some of them were, you know, more lengthy, more, more, more items than, than others, but, uh, but the idea was to, to see what's, what is of interest to the board and what are the leading candidates. And, and the leading candidate is obviously things having to do with reopening of schools. And that's of course where we've, our attention has been focused of late. So, so we're, we're kind of, the district, the board is, is concentrating in the right area, that's the one that's most important to us all. So, so that, that part of it is, is, is sounding good to me. And I'll, uh, I'll stop talking and, uh.
Pardon my internet. I, could I, is it okay for me to talk?
It is.
I, I just wanted to. No, no, I, I wanted to segue into what you said about the priority about the safety issue, but I wanted to, I wanted to add like a subset, um, how, how we're going to ensure equity for all our students through this, whatever method we're going to be using to delivering instruction. I'm not sure that, um, I don't know, I just, I just want to make sure that that comes forward, that we work on making sure that we have, that all the kids who need, um, online access have it, they need a Chromebook, they have it. Um, that, you know, that this, just want to make sure that that was part and parcel of that, so.
Okay, Chris Brewer, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me? Oh, let me put my video back on, sorry.
He can hear you.
Is that something we are working on? My, my indication from the opening plan is that is a high priority, making sure everyone has access. Am I correct in that?
That's correct, Paul. Um, the survey that went out, that's one of the things that we're collecting data on. And as I said earlier, uh, the students who we don't collect that information on, whether or not they have equitable access to computers, staying at home and, as well as Wi-Fi. Um, at that point, we're looking into those situations to make sure that it's equitable for all students. Um, we're very close to a one-to-one environment. Um, we're still working on that piece. We're waiting, they're backlogged a little bit with some Chromebooks right now. Um, but that's, that was the purpose of collecting that data and then also following up with those phone calls from the schools.
Thank you, Chris. And I've been looking, if I'm talking too fast, I've been looking at this and it seems to be a problem, not just here in Rome, but pretty much throughout the country is access.
Uh, you're absolutely 100% correct, Paul. This is not a Rome City School District issue. In fact, I would say, um, talking with my counterparts around our area, we're much further ahead, um, with Chromebooks and with Wi-Fi access for most of our students at this point and making sure that it's equitable. I know a few of my colleagues are still struggling in that area in their school districts. Um, but I think, I think we're in a pretty good shape with it. Uh, there's still some areas that we're working on, um, but we're getting there. Karen, did you, did you have a question for?
Yeah, I wasn't trying to imply that I didn't think we're doing a good job. I just wanted to make sure that we keep that in.
Right.
At the top of our list. I, it's real important to.
Yeah. And I can tell you for Patrick's group as well as Peter and myself, um, we're watching, we're looking at all the time, um, making sure that the, that every kid and every family has access to the resources that they need during this time.
My point is, my, my point is that everything I've seen over the last several months is that our administrators and our staff and everyone else has all of these things in mind. I've seen it in the reports, I've seen it in the opening plan. We don't have to send guests everything. Let them do their jobs, they're doing a good job at it, and we kind of keep track of what's going on.
Well, I don't think that it's time to tell anyone what they should do. I think it's having enough information that when someone has a question, we can without hesitation be able to back up our district. So it's just, and, and I agree with you, there are some questions that are universal. What happens if someone gets sick? What about the people who don't have access? Um, what happens if we all shut down again? And, and childcare, how, how do parents work and make sure their child is educated? So those are countrywide questions that we definitely, um, definitely see across the board. But then there are some district specific questions and 90 pages is a lot for anybody to digest. I, I personally, I've seen a couple other districts that put out a plain language condensed, you know, two to three page document for families. And I really wish we had done that because, you know, we all immerse ourselves a lot in doing this. Parents are already feeling horribly overwhelmed. So that's why I don't want to be that, you know, I, I want to be the person who's like, yes, we got this and instilling confidence. And I just want to have enough information to do that and make our district look awesome.
Yeah, I think, Tanya, I think it's fair to say that going forward, there's going to be more information. You know, we're, we're learning every day, the feedback from the, from the survey and whatnot. And once we, once we work on our approach and get into the specifics of what's happening, I think there'll be a lot more detail for everybody. Right now, there's just too many, too many questions and not enough answers. But I'd like to just go back for a second and ask Chris Brewer to, uh, comment on equity from a little bit different perspective. And that is the idea that, uh, the state was very much interested in, in looking at equity in, within, uh, school districts, uh, with their, with their investigations where they, where they're trying to, you know, get us to measure performance on a building by building basis to, to, and, and a lot of that was, was guided by their, their, their concerns about inequities across districts, different buildings, different, you know, portions of districts. Could you say a little bit about, it's a little bit different than, than the COVID thing, but not too much? Because it's affecting a lot of the same people are getting hurt in both cases.
Paul, could you ask your question again? I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't quite understand you.
Okay, well, the, the question dealt with the, the term equity, you know, and, and we've, we've just got done with the conversation of equity in the sense of what was happening with reopening and dealing with COVID. But before that, uh, we were addressing some shortfalls that were, uh, being levied on us by the, uh, by the state where we were looking at certain of our, of our buildings were being examined from the standpoint of, of equity relative to other buildings. You know what I'm talking about? I'm trying to think of the proper term for those, you know, that, those, that was the, that was the thing that kind of wound up with us on those, on those lists. But the underlying issue there, as I understood it from the state's standpoint, is they were trying to, uh, trying to assess districts as more that, you know, below the level of district, whether, whether a district had equitable resources and, um, instruction across their, their buildings. Does that help at all?
Um, I, I think, are you referring to the SEP and our DESEP plan?
Yeah, I am, I am. The, the underlying motivation for that, the, the equity part of it, I thought, I thought was a big, a big driver for the state when, when they were, you know.
Well, I mean, there, there, I mean, you, there's a couple different ways that you can talk about that topic of equity. I mean, you can talk about it within your title funding, uh, you can talk about it within your curriculum. I'm just trying to kind of figure out where you want me to go with that, your answer. If we're talking about the, um, the, the schools specifically that are on, um, the list, um, it's not necessarily an equity issue. Um, it was part of the scores, uh, in ESSA that were, were low on in some of those schools that we're looking at. Um, the state did put in some extra funding into those schools, um, to help with resources and other needs that those schools identified, um, within their SEP plans. Is that what you're, is that what you're referring to, Paul?
Yeah, I, I, maybe I was taking it too, too far abroad. I, I don't want to, I don't want to take a, on too much of a tangent, so I don't, uh, thank you for that.
Well, I mean, as far as that goes, I, I know there was a question that was raised earlier, if I could go into that. And Karen mentioned the DESEP and the, the SEP plans for the four schools, uh, that are on the list currently. We also have one TSI school, which is Bellamy, uh, that was identified this year. There's no other CSI schools that were identified by the state this year. Um, this is the second year for those four schools, uh, that have been identified. All of the schools have turned in their, um, SEP plans at this point. We've gotten two back, um, from the state, um, as of today, uh, that have been approved. We're still waiting on Staley and Dente's plan. Uh, they just haven't read them and, and finished those and approved those for us, as well as our DESEP plan. Um, what I can tell you with the SEP plans and the DESEP plans, they are all tied back to the district strategic goals, the DESEP especially. Um, I made it very clear as we were doing that, uh, with the committee, that we were going to tie those back to those district goals. Where there's a very strong emphasis on literacy, which is one of the areas, uh, that we're still currently working on, especially at the elementary levels. But furthermore, that literacy also goes into disciplinary literacy at the 712 level. If you've read the next generation learning standards that have just recently come out and the transfer from the Common Core standards, um, to the next gen learning standards, disciplinary literacy is going to be a very important piece at our 712 level. So that's one component that's put in, uh, that's been put into our DESEP plan. Um, the state has told us that, uh, we are not to bring that back to the board until the plans are approved. That's their process now. Um, so as soon as those plans are, I will be presenting, um, the SEP plans of each of the schools as well as, uh, the DESEP plans, or the DESEP plan, excuse me, um, for the district, so that everyone is aware of what our goals are that, uh, we're targeting in those for improvement across the district. I'm not sure if that answered your question, Paul, I hope.
Yeah, it did, it did, Chris.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
If there are no more comments on, uh, on that topic, why don't we move to our final topic, which is, uh, board meeting formats? So again, I'm going to turn to, uh, Dr. Fontana for her thoughts on, on, on suggesting that item, the board meeting formats. What did you have in mind there?
I just have one more thing on the board focus piece. Um, I, I just was reviewing, I went back to NISP. Um, you know, we just talked about our strategic plan and, um, I had mentioned it last year, you know, that we haven't, as a board, we haven't set any goals. And, um, there's actually, um, you know, the superintendent's own contract refers to us, um, working collectively to set annual goals. Um, you know, the NISP piece, um, responsibilities of a board member in the top three are create a shared vision for the future of education, set the direction of the school district to achieve the highest student performance and provide rigorous accountability for student outcomes and achievement results. Um, and support a healthy school district culture for work, work and learning. Like I just, I think we get so overwhelmed with all of the tasks that need doing that we forget to get back to the very root of, of what we're tasked to do as board members. And, and yes, that's policy and yes, that's, um, finance, but with the outcome of creating an exceptional school district with high student achievement. So I, I think for me, it would be helpful. I was happy to see this item on the agenda. Maybe this is, um, the opportunity for us to talk about scheduling a board retreat because I really think that it's important that we spend some time on both the topics that Paul Hagerty collected from us at, at the beginning of this new year, as well as, you know, how we get there, how we collectively work together, you know, how do we focus and get there? So, um, you know, I'm hoping that we, um, can really start talking about that. I think, I think a board retreat would be super helpful and that we should think about some tangible, measurable goals.
I think that's a good point. I think that's one that, that we will be talking about. I know in, in the discussions I had with Peter, uh, early on, actually, uh, in conjunction where I put my original list together and we sort of shared some things, we talked about that, the, the board professional development for the board and how best to do that and whether, you know, whether, you know, small snippets sort of like this tonight which are focused on particular issues that we could do, uh, sort of in-house or, or larger, uh, board retreats that are, you know, have professional, uh, guidance and whatnot are the way to go. We've, we've done, we've certainly done a number where we had, uh, a lead person that came in and talked to us about different, uh, goal or board, uh, parameters. Uh, we haven't done a lot where we kind of did it ourselves, maybe picked a topic and, and set aside a couple of hours to discuss it and, and bring forward the pros and cons and relate it to what we were, what we're doing as a district. So that's a good point. Uh, so our final point, and I'm running, we're running a little long. I was hoping we would do, be able to do this in an hour. We're running about an hour and 10 minutes or so, uh, is the board meeting format. Uh, so Karen, I'm going to go back to you on that one. You want, what was your thoughts there when you, when you outlined that, that topic? So Karen, I'm going to go back to you on that one. You want, what was your thoughts there when you when you outlined that that topic?
Oh, it was it was pretty simple, actually. It seemed like our last meeting, when we were on the board office and the public was there, that there was a lot of problems with the communication. They couldn't hear us, yada, yada. I just wondered what we could do to fix that. So we're trying to build, you know, transparency and collaboration with the community. It just seems like if they can't understand us, how can what can we do to fix it? That was that was the main reason for bringing that up. It wasn't a.
Yeah, and that's that. I think that's noted. And in fact, I was in the board office today and they were working on that, trying to correct some of the sound things that was in there for a finance meeting. But and they made some changes, but I don't think they're quite there yet. So that's a that's a recognized issue which I think many of us were not aware of during during that last meeting. I know I was talking into the speaker that was in front of me on the on the table only to find out that it's not connected to anything. Okay, so.
Go ahead, Lee.
No, I just, I'll hold my comment until we're done talking about the board format. I agree. I think we waited way too long to take public comment. I think this this whole concept of Zoom meetings leaves a lot to be desired when it comes to interacting with the public in a real way. And I'm sorry that there's no better way to do it, but I think we need to ensure that the audio, at the very least, is fixed before the next meeting because that's just kind of ridiculous. I mean, we're five months into this process about, and we still haven't been able to figure out how we're even handling a Zoom meeting. So I think that's poor planning on our part, but I'll hold the rest of my comments until we're done discussing this particular topic.
Okay, fine.
I have to agree with Lee on that. I mean, we've been doing this a lot. Hang on, I didn't mean to go into the webinar. I was trying to look at the document that I had sent. Paul, hold on. There it is. You know, I, we definitely don't want to discourage people from participating. I know there was a lot of frustration with the sound at the last one. We received an email today saying, you know, I didn't know about this meeting in a timely enough manner. So I think we can need to do a better job of utilizing our resources, our district website and our Facebook page in communicating when there are meetings and how to connect to those meetings. And I also think that it's important that we create a statement of expectations. So I guess partly, I think, I agree with you, Lee. I don't know if public comment, you know, we waited all the way after those department reports. I feel like in some other meetings, I know you and Jonathan have, and John Nash, obviously, have actively participated in city council meetings. And I feel like they do public comment much sooner. It's never my favorite thing for someone to come to the meeting just to say what they have to say and leave. However, I understand people's time is valuable and sometimes they do just need a forum to be heard. I emailed some suggested language that the current common council president shared with me and modified it and sent it to Paul. And I think it's important that we have a blanket statement that we make before public comments start to set the expectation, that we make sure it's clear that it's not a Q and A unless we specifically are holding a Q and A meeting or a work-type session that would prompt a question-and-answer period afterwards. We have the Ask the BOE email for the purpose of facilitating Q and A, or we can document those questions and respond. But I think we have to get really good about responding to those emails promptly, even if it's a "we heard you", "got your message, thank you for, you know, taking the time to interact with us" because that's important. But also not deterring them altogether. So I think we have to figure out, maybe it's premature, maybe that's part of the conversation of a board clerk, maybe, you know, we work on part of that person's role is to mediate and document questions and and comments that are coming in. But yeah, we definitely could do better with how we lay the agenda out, how we are able to be approached by people and how we handle our follow-up.
I guess one comment I would make on that is that although the there's been a lot of pitfalls with using Zoom, where we have, we have accumulated some pretty large audiences and got a lot of interactivity going with with the audience, which is which is a good thing. Now we've got to figure out how we're going to utilize that. You know, it fits well and like when we were doing our, the the meeting I remember is when we were chatting about the budget. We had like 100 and some people on and we were fielding a lot of questions, both through chat and as well as, I guess primarily through chat, but but that was really, I thought, interesting vis-à-vis our typical board meetings where we're really constrained in terms of how people, how many people can get in there and how people talk and who's who's around when we're answering or people are talking. So so I think there's a lot of, you know, we can make a lot of progress going forward. And this is a, this is a mechanism as well as our regular board meetings, if we get back to them sometime in some larger setting, you know, how how are we going to conduct those those kinds of meetings, you know, going back to when we used to, you know, ring a bell after five minutes and 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 didn't necessarily offer any comments to the audience. In fact, we sometimes went out of our way not to do that. So so there's a lot of, there's, there's a lot of good thought there and it's, that's a good, good point, Tanya. Lee, did you want to say something now? I think, or anybody, I'd like to open it up. You know, we have a little bit of time left. If anybody would like to make a comment or or a suggestion, have at it. Just maybe we could try to be as brief as possible. That would help.
Yeah, I'd like to start off if I could. You know, as Tanya alluded to in her last statement, our time is valuable. And we came to no decisions tonight. We had some discussion and some anecdotal conversation, which I know that some people like. I personally don't. I like to be presented with the information prior to the meeting, read the information, ask my questions prior to the meeting, and take a vote and do something meaningful. That's what I got on this board to do. I didn't come on to chit-chat and talk about things that I'm curious about. And I'm a little irritated that the qualification for calling a STAT meeting is to have these anecdotal conversations. We're, again, I have to reiterate, we're in the middle of a pandemic. It's not going anytime soon. To label this meeting as information relating to the reopening of schools was clickbait at best. We don't have our superintendent here to ask meaningful questions. I'm grateful that Chris Brewer was able to supply some manders, but the questions that were asked of him were very anecdotal and didn't really relate to the reopenings of schools. The other participants that are on this meeting, I'm sure, have children and they have questions and they need to know where to ask those questions. And that's, that's it. I have a hard time believing that there are people here that are watching, that are curious about the structure of our meetings and what our goals are as a board. And if they are, they're running for next term, and that's great. But I I'm just really irritated that, you know, you say our time is valuable and time and time again, my time is being wasted. And and I'm so upset by that. And I think that in the future, we should set some qualifications about what qualifies as a STAT meeting.
Can I speak? I would have asked for a vote on the committees, but we had four people and four people. It was going to be a tie, so we're not going to move forward on that. I understand what you're saying. I've spent through many meetings where I've spent enormous amount of hours. I understand what you're saying. My goal was really was to come forward with, you know, Peter wasn't going to be here, but we did get some information on the reopening plan. I think we brought, we communicated some to the people who are listening. The committee discussion wasn't going to go anywhere because we had eight people and it looked like it was going to be a 4-4 tie. So we couldn't vote on that. As far as the board focus, I think by next Thursday, I think we have to decide if we're going to have a retreat and talk, are we going to change our goals that have been on the books for a long time or not? Yes or no? If we're not, we're not. But that was where I was coming from. We have a lot of bridge building to do right now. We're a very diverse board. And if we don't get these issues out, we're, it's just how we're going to keep functioning. It's not going to be functioning well. So that was another reason. And then as far as the communication, I felt that was important and we get that out there. So I wasn't trying to waste your time. I'm sorry that it came out that way. With four, so, but we can decide, I think, I'll ask Paul if he can ask us next Thursday whether we want to retreat to work on our communication and our collaboration issues. If not, we don't. It's just, I think we put it out there, yes or no, we can do that. Lee's not, Elise is not here tonight, but then we know where we're going, but.
I don't think that's your fault, Karen, that this conversation was nothing more than a conversation. That was my question when we ended some 40 minutes ago, the conversation about the committees. Are we going to vote on this? Let's vote. And yeah, you're right. It would be a 4-4. What does that mean?
Right, there was no reason to put it up. It was obvious where it was going to go.
What does a 4-4 vote do?
But if I hadn't shown up, it would have been 4-3 and we wouldn't have voted.
Right. I mean, that's, that's, that's ridiculous. I mean, just because you think you might lose a vote and now we don't want to have it? I think we should have it.
Have the vote. I don't care. I was just saying.
Okay.
And so what's happening right now is why we had to have this meeting. We need to learn to have constructive dialogue instead of yelling at each other. Not everyone is going to get their way all the time and not everything that someone brings to the table that someone disagrees with is awful or foolish. We all have legitimate concerns. We don't have opportunities for candid dialogue. Lee, I apologize that you don't think there's value to that, but I do. I think that's part of relationship building. And unfortunately, open meeting law requires that if we want to have a conversation, we have it openly, other than two very limited pauses. So the appropriate thing to do was follow what our bylaws say and to say, we didn't get to these things after a five-hour meeting the other night. We do have reopening on the table, which is probably going to monopolize most of the next regular meeting agenda, as it should. But we've got to find a way to problem solve as a as a unit. And I didn't see it last year and I, and I I disagree with you. I need to have clarity and more data sometimes. I don't just read an agenda and go, okay, I can vote on that. I'm good. Questions come to my mind and I don't, I fear that just emailing those questions doesn't give any member of the public any insight as to how we arrived at our decision. And that's, that's our responsibility under open meeting laws. It's frustrating, but that's where we are. We don't get to just be like, hey, guys, you want to meet over here and talk about this? Like, it's just, it's difficult. It's it's a challenge.
Okay, what I'd like to do, I'd like to open this up to some of the people that haven't had a chance to to say anything. I think, I think, I think we know quite a bit about, you know, different positions on this. I don't know that we have the answer to the committees, whether it's committees yes or committees no, or this committee, that committee. But certainly, we've, we've certainly discussed it a little bit. But but we're running out of time. So I'd like to offer, you know, an opportunity for John Nash. You've got your hand up. Why don't you pick it up?
Thanks, Paul. I don't think this was a waste of time. I, it was good to me to hear others' perspectives. It opened my mind. I'm always come with an open mind. It was very good to hear some of these other perspectives because there were things that I may not have thought about or or considered, and I appreciated that. And I'd rather spend an hour and a half on an off-board meeting night instead of tacking it on to a regular board meeting night because we'd be there forever. And people get tired. People want to get home. People told you to have to go to work in the morning. I thought it was very good. I thought the exchange was good. There should not be any animosity. It should be, we're all together. We're all, we're all serving the public. We're all serving the students, the public, the children of our district, and we need to come together. And nobody's going to agree with everything anybody says, but we should be able to do it like adults and and move forward. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, John. This is Paul Fitz. Just want to remind everyone that there was no agenda item on tonight to take a vote on anything. That would have required a total agreement by all of us to take a vote on that. I, I think if we're going to vote on anything, we need to know about it ahead of time. Second, Paul, please, when you get a chance, respond back to Mrs. Nelson, who had an inquiry. I don't know if you read it. And please assure her that we are certainly putting equity and equality forefront in everything we do as best we can under these circumstances.
Anyone else? Well, I would, I would entertain a motion to dismiss the meeting, end the meeting.
Motion.
All in favor?
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for giving up your time tonight.
And Tanya, if you get a chance, or Paul, please respond to Mrs. Nelson.
I have that here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tanya, for getting that, getting us started today. And why don't you sign us off as the host?